Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, good morning, good afternoon or good evening to you all. And a very warm welcome to this special session of UNIDO's Bridge for Cities, which is taking place on World Cities' Day, and that's not just a happy coincidence. I'm Rodri Williams and I have the privilege of being your moderator for today's conversations. This is a special session because it's been deliberately designed to prepare the ground for what we look forward to as an in-person Bridge for Cities in 2023. And that will be the eighth Bridge for Cities event since UNIDO launched this knowledge platform back in 2016. And the theme of our event today is unleashing the potential of innovation for a climate resilient urban future. We're all here because cities are a key battleground in the climate emergency. They are both part of the problem and part of the solution. Cities generate over 70% of greenhouse gas emissions. They consume over, or around 80%, of world energy. So they are a critical engine of effective climate action. And decisions taken by policymakers at city level, by planners at city level and their partners in the coming months and years are going to have a decisive impact on the ability of the world to meet sustainable development goals. Now during the next two hours, you're going to hear some of the ways in which visionary cities around the world are using new technologies and innovative approaches to tackle the twin challenges of climate change and the energy crisis. So to get us underway, it's my great pleasure to introduce the Director General of UNIDO, Mr. Gerhard Müller, who's going to offer some welcoming remarks through a video message.
Excellencies, distinguished delegates, ladies and gentlemen. As Director General of UNIDO, I'm very happy to welcome you today at the Bridge for Cities special session. Thank you for the support by the Government of China. The Bridge for Cities event is now a flagship event for UNIDO. It is our unique platform to discuss urban development. Our focus is how we innovate to reach a climate resilient urban future. The solutions exist, but we need the determined political will to implement them. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen. Today, the world is facing crises like we have never seen before. Cities, especially those in developing countries, suffer from climate change most. Natural hazards, changing rainfall patterns and energy shortfalls hurt more and more people. We think about the catastrophe in Pakistan, for example. This affects the well-being of people who live in cities. Cities consume up to 80% of the world's energy. We must make this energy as sustainable as possible. We can and we must support cities in developing countries to prioritize climate smart growth. Ladies and gentlemen, STG 9 means resilient infrastructure for resilient economies. STG 9 is closely linked and contributes to STG 13 on climate action and to the targets set by the Paris Agreement. We need to promote investment in infrastructure and innovation to accelerate industrialization in the digital and green transition. Cities and governments cannot do it alone. Partnerships are essential. Local governments are key partners. Renewables, green hydrogen, energy efficiency, emissions reduction are all priorities for cities. We have to match them with the most suitable technologies. I see UNIDO as an innovation hub. Platforms like Bridge for Cities are great vehicles to share knowledge and technologies. These new partnerships mobilize financing. Ladies and gentlemen, innovation is the key. We need to think outside the box and learn from each other. My motto is "progress by innovation." This is UNIDO's new guiding approach. And achieving progress by innovation is the core job of city leaders and policymakers. Let me assure you, UNIDO stands ready to support your cities' efforts towards a more resilient, green and sustainable future. I wish you great success in your talks today. Thank you very much. Best regards from Vienna.
Well, I think we're grateful to Director General of UNIDO Gerhard Müller for those remarks which both convey the scale of the crisis, the unprecedented crisis that we're facing, but also offers some hope in terms of the solutions that are there if we can get the partnerships right. We're now going to move on to a set of short opening remarks by three distinguished guest speakers who are going to help us frame our discussions this morning by sharing their perspective on the challenges and opportunities faced by cities as they build a more resilient future, a climate resilient future. I think you're all aware of the very strong support which the Government of China has given to the Bridge for Cities events and UNIDO ever since its inception in 2016. So it's a great pleasure to introduce His Excellency Ambassador Wang Chun, China's ambassador and permanent representative to UNIDO, to deliver a video message.
Director General Gerhard Müller, Mr. Rodri Williams, excellencies and colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. At the outset, I would like to thank Director General Müller for inviting me to address the special session of Bridges for Cities, especially on the occasion of World Day of Cities. The Bridges for Cities as an annual flagship event of UNIDO provides a unique forum for stakeholders, especially cities around the world, to share their ideas and experiences on sustainable urban development. The Bridges for Cities, especially its purpose, is very much in line with China's Belt and Road Initiative and GDI, the Global Development Initiative. And it's a special session this year, I believe, will definitely further promote the connectivity of cities along the Belt and Road and renew our efforts to implement the initiatives as well as the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development. As you may recall, Xi Jinping, the Chinese President, at the just concluded 20th National Congress of the Communist Party of China, highlighted the importance of China's Belt and Road Initiative as a public good as well as a platform for international cooperation in its more proactive opening up strategy. With this initiative, China has become a major trading partner for more than 140 countries and regions. It leads the world in total volume of trade in goods and it is a major destination for global investment and a leading country in outbound investment. Through these efforts, China has advanced a broader agenda of opening up across more areas and in great depth. The practice of the past nine years since its Belt and Road Initiative pronounced witnessed the benefits it has brought to the Chinese people, but also the development opportunities to other countries around the world as well, benefiting people all over the world. At the same time, UNIDO's annual event, the Bridge for Cities, by focusing on the theme of development of green economies for cities and connecting cities through new industrial revolution, has made a positive contribution to China's Belt and Road Initiative. Excellencies and colleagues, unleashing the potential of innovation for a climate resilient urban future is the theme of this year's special session of the Bridge for Cities. It fits well with China's GDI, the Global Development Initiative, which focuses on climate change and green development. The GDI, I believe, will bring stability and positive energy into the current turbulent and changing world. At the same time, the Chinese city builders, while having come a long way in their own sustainable development and environmental protection efforts, would like to benefit from insights and unique experiences of their fellow colleagues from cities of other countries at this special session and seek to establish new partnership. In conjunction, they, of course, would definitely like to contribute their own inputs and experiences. Excellencies and colleagues, the Bridge for Cities serves as a genuine bridge for all countries in pursuing common development. It's therefore my hope that the current special session, by engaging in in-depth exchanges and discussion on addressing such challenges as climate crises, urban innovation and economic and social recovery, will help inject more vitality into urban sustainable development and intensify international efforts to build a community with a shared future for humankind. China, for its part, will continue to vigorously support UNIDO and its Bridge for Cities by further expanding its cooperation with other countries within UNIDO to promote the attainment of the goal of a more robust, greener, healthy global development. In conclusion, I wish the special session a complete success. Thank you.
Well, our thanks to His Excellency Ambassador Wang Chun for very definitely and interestingly broadening our perspective. There's a lot of food for thought in his remarks and already some words are coming through to me as moderate positivity, energy, vitality. These are the qualities and the characteristics in discussion that we're trying to promote through this year's special session of Bridge for Cities. Our next speaker is Miss Maaimuna Mohammed Sharif. Miss Sharif is the Executive Director of UN Habitat, the United Nations Human Settlements Program. I'm sure you all know that UN Habitat works in over 90 countries, promoting urbanization as a positive and transformative force for people and communities. And Miss Maaimuna Mohammed Sharif has sent us the following video message.
Excellencies, honorable guests, distinguished delegates, colleagues, friends, ladies and gentlemen. A very good morning to all of you. It gives me a great pleasure to be with you at the opening of this Bridge for Cities special session with the theme "Unleashing the Potential of Innovation for a Climate Resilient Urban Future." Thank you, Mr. Gerhard Müller, UNIDO Director General, for inviting us to partner with you in organizing this event. Dear friends, we are living in difficult times where climate change, disease pandemics and conflicts are inflicting misery and deprivation on many. Unless we can move to a more cautious and caring approach to managing the planet, these challenges will leave an even worse legacy for future generations. Urban areas are major contributors to climate change, accounting for 71% to 76% of carbon emissions. And climate change is negatively impacting on infrastructure and worsening access to basic urban services and quality of life in cities. The most affected population are the urban poor, who tend to settle on marginal land prone to landslides, near polluted grounds, in unstable structures vulnerable to earthquakes and along waterfronts in coastal areas. The urban poor are indeed increasingly vulnerable to climate change, with more than 1 billion people living in slums and informal settlements. UN Habitat is addressing these challenges in three key areas. In assessment, we have applied our city resilient profiling tool in some 139 cities in 27 countries to measure and strengthen their resilience to multi-hazard impacts, including those associated with climate change. In advocacy, we have supported 10,000 cities to join the global coexistence of Mayors for Climate and Energy. And in supporting project development, we have developed adaptation fund projects worth over USD 49 million to support the community-level adaptation of infrastructure to climate changes in Southeastern Africa, Cambodia, Jordan, Lebanon, Laos-Priprals Democratic Republic, Pakistan and Vietnam. In conclusions, ladies and gentlemen, we know that the quality of urban leadership is essential to address climate resilience. We also know that many innovations come from the cities through good urban planning, promoting energy efficiency, the use of nature-based solutions and many other opportunities. I know this meeting will have fruitful discussions and I wish you every success in your deliberations. Thank you for your attentions.
Well, thank you very much, Miss Maaimuna Mohammed Sharif, for your fascinating brief but fascinating account of what UN Habitat is doing around the world in many countries. I think the issue of the urban poverty and the urban poor was starkly highlighted by your remarks and I'm sure that will be something that we will return to not only in this session but also in Bridge for Cities next year. Thank you very much indeed. And for our last set of opening remarks, it's now a pleasure to introduce Mr. Omar Al Rawi, who is a member of Vienna City Council. Vienna is not only the host to UNIDO, a proud host, but has also been a highly significant and valued partner for Bridge for Cities since its inception. So good morning, Mr. Al Rawi. Very good to see you and the floor is yours.
So good morning and thank you for the possibility to introduce also some remarks from the view of the city of Vienna. By the way, Vienna is the only European city in the European Union which is also a headquarters for the United Nations. I would like to emphasize one thing and we heard now in the remarks and the videos that were delivered to us that cities are the place where the most production of CO2 is produced and we know they are part of the problems and part of the solution. But don't forget also that in the meantime, 50% of all the world population are living in cities and within 2050, maybe 75% to 80% of the world population will be living in cities. So that's usual that then the whole problem of the climate challenges will be in cities because the most people are living there. And then we had that they are part of the solution, but they're not only part of the solution because there you can change something, but also don't forget that the whole innovation endeavor, the whole research and the technological solutions will be done in universities, in big institutions and they're also located in cities. So that's one of the things. I think that many of the solutions that we could provide to find solutions, for example, implementing public traffic, district heating, waste management, keep resources and built with high density by keeping life quality, reduce traffic, recycling of the waste. All these things and all the solutions are very, very, very easy to be implemented in cities and rural areas. So that's why we know that cities are very vulnerable, but they are the one where you can get the solutions there and that's why we're always talking about resilient cities. In Vienna, for example, we, it's our central goal to become climate neutral by 2040. By 2030, about 230,000 inhabitants of the city of Vienna will be provided by solar power and the increase of photovoltaic places where implemented are so large as 100 football fields in a year. We're drilling now 30,000 meters to provide 125,000 Viennese with geothermal energy. Our insularation plan where we burn our waste heats about 350,000 households and 7,000 large customers such as the Central Hospital in Vienna. And even the Sichet Aspan, this is one of the biggest city development areas we are implementing now in Vienna where we provide 25,000 people to live. It's not only a place to live, but it's also a living laboratory, urban laboratory, where we test a lot of things such as automatically driving buses, some innovations in implementing green hydrogen and all these things. And I would like also to emphasize one very important thing because I was not participating, I just opened last week the Green City Conference in Vienna organized by the European Bank for Development and Reconstruction. And I also participated two weeks ago in South Korea with the UCLG, United Cities and local governments in the world. And I think that one of the most important things is to try to keep an eye of the possibility how cities could also do a lot within the city diplomacies and to maybe to even share or could implement peace and de-escalation in the world. I think one of the problems is that if we look now for the European Union, you have three pillars, you have the European Council of Ministers, you have the Parliament and you have the Commission. But the cities as a fourth column should be implemented. That's one of the most important things and that's why I think that this initiative by UNIDO, Bridges to Cities, trying to include cities in part of a global solution and also a global multilateralism networking would be very, very important for the future of our life. So thank you again for this initiative. Thank you for choosing Vienna as a place to do and we're looking forward to support such initiatives in the future. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much indeed, Mr. Al Rawi. I think that was definitely for me, not only as a dynamic presentation of a city that is really working very hard to tackle some of these issues, but it was also a very positive message. I think you're making real progress and it's very impressive to hear something about it. I'm also quite struck by the message, which of course is extremely relevant to Bridge for Cities, that cities have a role internationally in working together and that sort of city diplomacy is something that we really should place a great deal of value and emphasis on. So thank you very much indeed for giving us that food for thought. So with those very helpful framing remarks from our three opening speakers, I think we have some very useful, we've been given some very useful context. We've been reminded of the importance of multilateral and multi-stakeholder collaboration in achieving the sustainable development goals related to climate. So now I want to move us on to our two keynote contributions ahead of the panel. And it's a great pleasure to introduce two leading academic experts in the field of urban studies. We have from Tongji University in Shanghai, Professor Wu Jichang. Good morning, Professor, and a warm welcome to you. And from Drathclyde University in Glasgow, Scotland, we have Professor Richard Bellingham. Richard, good morning to you. Very good to have you with us. Professor Wu, if I could start with you, please? And I just want to pose a pretty broad question and you can take us where you like with it. But what do you see as being the greatest challenges for cities faced by climate change?
Yes, it's, thank you for sort of all. I would like to say it's a really very good topic about it. I have prepared the talk and in the city resilience for climate change. And I have to a PowerPoint and it's really five points. It's really very strong for us. I would like to say this biggest challenge, the first one will be to make the water supply and the rainfall change a lot in the cities. And especially we will see that not only in Asia, the traditional rainfall, the flow cities in Asia. It's also the bigger changes even in European cities or in bigger cities. We can remember the bigger great rainfall in Germany in last years. Also even released the bigger disaster. The second one, I would like to say the change of the energy consumed and the geographic distribution of energy consumed is bigger, bigger change. Actually, I have, I will also show you the data of the energy consumed because of the change of climate in the city, in the different geographic regions. It's the second one, the energy consumed, bigger change. The third one is that we can see that because of the, due to the climate change, we see the agriculture product supply, it's changing also a lot. We can see even the supply, not only the number of the supply, the possibility, also the kinds of the structure of supply of agriculture product because of the, due to the climate change. Certainly, normally the most people directly see the hurricanes and also typhoons, with the flows more frequently attack the cities without wear preparation of the cities. Not only in the developed, developing countries, also in developed countries. It's also much more disaster in the last decades. We can see it. So finally, I would like to say not only the physical, the disaster, also the biological changes and also especially the influence of the epidemics influence is by the climate change without public awareness. And also the content measures in both the north of the world and the south of the world. So it's really, we can see the change a lot in different levels. So today, I think it's very important that we sit together in this special issue under this UNIDO, we together and in different parts of the world to really think again and theories to think what's the biggest challenge and what we can do for the future, especially for the, for the, what we can do. And in the year 2010, we hosted the World Expo Shanghai. The talk is the Better City, Better Life. So I think today the city is really like the people just in the opening speeches taught us, the 70%, more than 70% energy consumed of the humankind in the city and the more emission, more than the most emission, carbon emission of our world is from the city. But on another side, we can see the, also our Twitter. But on another side, we can see the, also I totally agree with the, the Mr. R. Ruddy. That on another side, we don't forget more and more percent, almost every year, the zero point of five to one percent population moved to the city. So it's the more and more people living in the city. In the year two thousand and eight, more than fifty percent of the population living in city. City, we say that the city is a being, this is also life. It's also the life is we can see the change. I would like to say the, the city is have also their own regulation. For this weekend, how can we see the city development? So we collect the change of climate change over thirteen thousand eight hundred sixty one cities in the world. And to see the different change and how can we make the city resilience? Also build the special units in the world is over fifty millions actually the, the, the communities in the city. We can see a lot of bigger challenges, especially the global, the population actually change a lot in the last decades. And more and more, one side is more and more influence to the climate change. On another side, also the climate change influence the people, the life or the energy consumed. And also the material consumed. This is we showed the different waterfall, the, the, also the water, the, the, the raining for the, in the last years, only we can see the thirty years, the change already very bigger. In the human history, in the history of our earth's development, it's very short time. But we see already the big change of the climate change of the waterfall. And so it's very important that we catch up the flow of the city. We know the change in the, in the, in the city. And so we simulate and to follow the flows of the city, of the climate change of the people flow. So now we come to second consideration, what can we do for the cities? And facing these major challenges. So I think the first one, we should explore the city development laws, the city as a life. We see a lot of laws and we see, how can we adapt the people life and the urban development to the climate change, to our, the, the, the change of our world. The second, I think we should learn more from the history and the traditional wisdom to make the city more smart. We always think we, today we are great civilization in the world. But on the, on the other side, actually we forget a lot of wisdom. It's not only the smart, it's really the wisdom in traditional history. We save a lot of energy and we use a much small material to make life the, the, the happiness. This is a very important. Third one, I think it's also very important. Third one is also very important, we should really cooperation, close the legends over the world. It's very important. So I am totally agree, the topic bridge for the cities. We should make the people in the world close the north to source and close the east to western. To let people together, make them much more bridge and bridges between us. This is very important. So we today, we see a lot of the data every day and especially in the high density. We simulate and how can we make the city save the energy, save the material? And let the city much more to, 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 to sense the climate change and to learn from the more and more from the history and from the nature. So we moderate the cities, this is we moderate the Shanghai and where is the climate change? Where is the, the, the traffic flow in every hour? So we learn a lot of things from this digital change. We can see the change of climate. So that's the final, I think we now in the last five years, we from the different cities to gather this, the, the, the data and to give the proposal for on different cities, especially the biggest city wants the, the coast of China to give the, a lot of proposal to reduce energy saving, to reduce energy consume and let a lot of proposals, different the project to saving the energy. And so we always to learn from the city and to know where is the much more energy waste. So we see exactly to learn the different parts of the city to, to see where is the possibility to save it. And finally, I would like to say, how can we to measuring to the, is we correct or not? We, our group with me, my student, my colleagues say, our answer is very clearly lies the citizens certification. It's very important, actually not only on the, the government, it's also on the people. Actually, people today is much more see very clearly, they are satisfied with the green. And the second is also the harmony between the cities and their natural surrounding. And we can see more and more exactly which city, which city use how much energy and how much natural materials. And we can see a city use less or less consume the energy or the material from the nature. So it's today, we can see much more, the city in China begins to change. As a lot of cities already through the, our measuring, through our proposal, change the ten on the other side to reduce the energies and the material consumed. So it's a very hard way to change the course. But we can see already the, from the, the change in, from the different cities, we do a lot. And especially, I'm very proud as a professor in the university, I mobilize a lot of young generation, the young student, they learn a lot of things. And that's because our student from different country, different cities, they do together. And we do the comparison and on this website in the UNESCO, in the UNESCO the website for the intelligent cities. And they do a lot and do a lot of different language, do a lot of initiate from the young student. And we gathering a lot of data and a lot of proposal for their own hometown from student. This is our website and I'm very proud we can do together. Totally agree, the motto, bridge of city, bridge of people, bridge of the young people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Professor Wu, and thank you for making available to our online audience the resources that, that you described. Very, very fascinating slides that you had and the highlighting the importance and value of AI and, and artificial intelligence technologies in monitoring, monitoring climate change. But I was very particularly struck by one point you made, which is that in a, in an event and a session where we're talking a lot and our emphasis is very much on innovation and new technologies. You, you took time to stress the importance of history and traditional wisdom. And I think that's a concept that perhaps we should bear in mind for the agenda of Bridge twenty twenty three. But thank you very much, Professor Wu. So our next keynote speaker is Professor Richard Bellingham. And Richard is Director of the Institute for Future Cities at the University of Strathclyde in Glasgow. Good morning, Richard, and welcome to you. And I'd like to start really by putting a similar question to you as I put to Professor Wu, which is, Richard, what do, what do you see as the main sustainability challenges for cities globally at the moment?
Well, clearly, cities have a critical role to play. The, the cities globally need to accelerate their contribution to reducing carbon emissions because cities are globally are responsible for most carbon emissions, particularly in the wealthier nations. And cities need to do this in ways that are socially and economically acceptable. And that's, that's not easy because we're living in a time of economic and social stress. And citizens entirely reasonably have many very immediate priorities on their minds, such as health, jobs, personal safety. So a key challenge for cities is how do they gain and keep the support of their citizens in, in delivering what could be quite radical and, and sometimes painful changes for some parts of society? You know, for example, you know, as regards energy, people, businesses want secure, dependable, affordable energy supplies. And that means our cities have to have sustainable and resilient energy systems that work all the time, every time. And because we want it to be sustainable, it needs to be based on a diverse range of clean and affordable energy sources. And that's, yeah, it's not an easy compromise to, to achieve. That, that move to cleaner energy implies major disruption to existing systems. We have across the world, huge investment in existing city systems and existing business models and operation models that just create very significant barriers to change. These systems were created sometimes not so long ago with the idea that they would last for twenty, thirty years into the future. And so, so asking people to abandon those systems is, and investors to abandon those systems is, is not straightforward. We've also, you know, early we heard a mention of, of the developing world. And in, in the developing world, we're going to see very, we are seeing very high rates of city population growth, you know, with hundreds of millions of people expected to move into cities over the next twenty years. However, those, those developing world cities are often undersupplied with key infrastructure and services and such as reliable energy supplies to support those populations or indeed water supplies. I mean, per capita energy consumption in the developing world is a fraction of what we see in wealthier nations, and that leads to poor services, embeds poverty, impacts health and it constrains economic growth. And, and we can anticipate major growth in energy consumption in the developing world over the coming decades. The question is, and that reflects, you know, population and economic growth. And the question is, how do we, how do we deliver on those quite reasonable expectations of, of social justice and social equity in the developing world? And but do it in a way that's affordable for the, for those populations? Yeah, I mean, we need to, those people to, to have access to affordable, clean energy systems and, and for cities to use that energy. So it's not just the production, it's also the use has to be efficient and effective and clean. So that, that will require major investment. And that means we need innovative financing mechanisms that are capable of delivering that transformation at that scale in, in the developing world. We've also heard mention of climate change and people, you know, colleagues who, you know, quite rightly acknowledge that climate change is already with us, where it's outpacing the infrastructure we have in place. Because when our cities were designed, they were designed with certain climates in mind. Extreme rainfall events, heat waves, they're overwhelming the infrastructure, you know, our, our drainage systems are experiencing, they were designed to cope with a one in a hundred year rainfall event. But now those rainfall events are happening every five years rather than every hundred years. And so that's, that means very significant change required in key infrastructure. So our cities rely on these multiple systems, critical systems, energy, transportation, communications, water, just to name a few. And these systems, they extend many miles beyond the boundaries of our cities. They don't just stop suddenly at the edge of the city. They are, our cities suck in resources and, and people and money for, for many miles in order to survive and, and thrive. And all those systems are interlinked and mutually reliant. So a failure in one system can lead to a cascading failure in multiple others, you know. And, you know, a key example would be an energy, failure of an energy system that leads to failures in multiple of the systems over a very short time period. So one of the questions is how do we cope? How do we design more resilient systems that are able, that are designed holistically and able to cope with those, those multiple stresses and indeed catastrophic events in a more holistic fashion? And that means partnership because many cities don't have control over the key systems over which they rely. So they need to draw in many other organizations in order to deliver effective strategies.
So cascading risk, Richard, is for you a, something that people are paying insufficient attention to. If they're interlinking between or the connectedness between different sorts of risks. Do you think, do you think existing methodologies don't, don't take that holistic picture into account? Is that, is that your argument?
I think, I think that's a valid point. What we are, quite often we see each system being designed and operated in isolation from each other. So the transport, the people designing and running the transport system, that's what they do. The people designing, running the energy system, that's what they do. And they're both doing excellent jobs, but they don't necessarily understand the complex interdependencies. And that, you know, that how fast failure will come if, if there is a catastrophic event of some sort. So an example would be, you know, when, when Hurricane Sandy brought down the energy systems in, in New York, it, it then led to failures of really quite trivial systems, but ones people just depend on, like, like the ability to pay for things with credit cards in shops, which meant the shops shut down, which meant people just couldn't buy food. I mean, is it, you know, so it's a, it, you know, so it's a very significant impact from, you know, and it should have been manageable, but it, but it, but it wasn't at the time. They, they, and they've, but to be fair, New York has done very significant analysis now over those questions, but it'd be, yeah, but it's, it's extremely complex. And what we need are the key players working in the same room together to work out how to, how do they support each other? Because the transport system leaves the energy system, leaves the water system and so on. So.
One of that, I've got one last question to you, and I wonder if your answer just links to it, which is clearly in dealing with this, this, this complex set of related challenges, city leaders face some difficult trade offs. And as somebody who advises cities on their work, what, what advice do you have for cities as they try to balance those different trade offs?
Well, for, for a start, what I would say is every city is different. So in terms of their issues and opportunities, resources and solutions and that. And the solutions need to respect those differences. There isn't a single magic bullet, you know, a one size fits all solution that's going to work for every city. You see some patterns, but, but it's not. So what we need are solutions to be designed that also deliver on the economic and social needs of cities. So it's, the technology is a tool, the technology is there to help us deliver a better city. So the needs vary between cities, so the design, but and the trade off decisions are essentially political in nature and need to reflect the and need to reflect the the values of the people and the and citizens in those locations. So we know, and delivering major change means winning the support of the of the citizens and and indeed other key stakeholders. So we need to design solutions which deliver win, win, wins. You know, it's a it's a win for the businesses, it's a win for the communities and citizens, you know, for the citizens, it might deliver you know, better jobs, more secure jobs for for commercial players, it may offer investment opportunities or additional revenue streams. So but the aim must be to design these holistic solutions that deliver on sustainability, deliver on resilience and deliver on the socio the socioeconomic needs of the citizens and communities there. Yeah, and what I would also say is create the partnerships early. You know, involve communities early, involve the key stakeholders early and co-design the solutions with those partners. Don't, a little too often, sometimes I see you know, people design solutions and then they try and sell those solutions to the stakeholders. I say, do it the other way around. Involve those key people now, find out what they care about and design a solution that delivers on their goals as well. You know, there was an example in Glasgow we were working on recently where we, it was it was about a low carbon initiative. But what the key key thing the local community wanted was better sports facilities for their children. So we designed that in as part of the renewable energy solution. And then we had huge support from the local community. So the aim ultimately has to be to make our cities better places to live, more equitable in terms of access to opportunities and services, safe, you know, resilient to those climate change pressures, successful, great, you know, delightful, but also delivering on that that major contribution to to climate change, reducing carbon emissions as well.
Richard, thank you very much indeed. We have a question in the chat, which I shall try to get to in a moment. But thank you very much for that. And I I think the very interestingly, you know, our focus is rightly on cities, but there are two other sort of C words that have come out really from your comments, which I think are very important. And it'll be interesting to see whether our panelists pick up on it. One is communities or community and the other is citizens. You know, this is not just about high tech innovative and disruptive technologies being applied. It's actually about creating livable cities for people, real people with real needs and real values. And I think that throws us back to the comments in this by Munna Muhammad Sharif as well about in her opening remarks. So thank you very much. I'm going to bring you and Professor Wu back at the latest stage in the proceedings and ask you to share with us your thoughts on the takeaways for for next year. But I've got a question, which I'm going to just insert quickly now, if I may, from the chat. And that is, what kind of emergency or disaster planning should be prepared for global cities? Many cities in the past could not do so. How should city states prepare for the worst? It's a big question. Do you have a quick answer?
Well, one of the techniques we use is the use of scenarios where where we can explore a number of many different circumstances, but we can explore quite extreme circumstances and ask the what if questions, you know, what would happen if the following the following impact happened? Like, like, for example, we did this in in Scotland. It was a while ago, but we did. We explored what would happen if every electrical power station in Scotland failed at the same time for some reason? How would we get it all back up and running? And one of the things we discovered when we did ran that scenario was when, and we actually had people role play the whole thing. We played it like a almost like a war game, if you like. It was, you know, we had people in different rooms. But what we discovered is there weren't enough telephone lines to cope with satellite telephone lines, I should say, to cope with the liaison, level of liaison which was going to be needed between the different players. So I would say, yes, scenario. Use of scenarios is is, and and it helps people think about those really difficult questions because we're not saying this will happen.
Yep.
But it helps us explore how we will cope if it happens.
Perfect. Thank you very much indeed for that wonderfully concise but very useful answer and wonderfully concise because we're absolutely bang on time. We have a lot to cover this morning, we have a lot of speakers and you've brought us very much to the ten o'clock point. So thank you both, thank you and Professor Wu very much. The congruous speed. Let's see you later, as I say, for for some for some afters. So it's now my pleasure to introduce our fantastic panel. We have managed to mobilize this morning speakers who bring a rich mix of expertise and experience to this discussion and also bring a diverse city perspective. They represent or have worked with very diverse cities. I was hoping to say that we had a speaker, a panelist from each continent, but I'm afraid we've we've lost one of ours. Mr. Vita Mulala from Lelongue, Malawi was due to join us, but unfortunately, regrettably, he's been unable to join us this morning. So we're a little short. But that does mean that our panelists have a little more time to talk than they would otherwise have had. So let me just, let me just introduce them now. We have from Singapore. I'd like to welcome Hugh Lim. Hugh is the executive director of the Centre for Livable Cities in Singapore. Hugh, good to see you. Good morning.
Very good morning to you, a good day to everyone.
Thank you so much. From Minas Gerais in Brazil, we have the State Secretary for Environment and Sustainable Development, Ms. Marilia Carvalho de Melo. Good morning, State Secretary. Very nice to see you, bright and early in Brazil. Thanks for, thanks very much for joining us.
Good morning.
Good morning from Glasgow.
Thank you very much for this.
You're very welcome. From Glasgow, we have Gavin Slater, who's Head of Sustainability for Glasgow City Council.
Good morning.
Morning Gavin. And from Dubai, we have Dubai's Director of Strategy and Innovation, Ms. Moses Swaydan. Good morning, Swaydan.
Good morning, everyone.
Good to see you. And last but not least, representing WSP, the Environment and Infrastructure Consultancy, we have Mr. Jonas Roberts from Canada, I think.
Yes, St. John's. Thank you.
Yes, St. John's in Canada. So thank you all very much for being here to share examples of how your city is using or has used innovation to advance climate action. We're going to divide the panel up into two parts. In the first part, we're going to hear some specific case studies. And in the second half, we're going to focus on the role and importance of partnerships in delivering successful resilience projects at city level. So two, two bites of the cherry. And we'll start off, if we may, with the specifics. So Hugh, can I come to you first as Executive Director of the Centre for Livable Cities in Singapore? I think you're going to talk to us about the highly innovative Singapore Green Plan 2030. And that you have a few slides to take us through. Over to you.
Thank you very much, Rodri. And a good day again to everyone who's joining us. It's certainly our pleasure to be able to share what we're doing here in Singapore to address climate change. And I'm aware that the speakers before us have already introduced this topic very comprehensively. If I could have the first slide on, and I'll just use this more as a summary because we're trying to cover quite a bit of ground in a in a short period of time. I think first things to point out that the Singapore Green Plan 2030 was launched in two zero two one, and it actually represents a whole of nation effort to be able to address climate change. In fact, the Singapore public sector is taking the lead to set out new measures and targets to be able to reduce emissions across the public sector under what we call the GreenGov.SG movement. And we aim to be able to peak our emissions by 2025 and ahead of the national target, which is also to be able to galvanize a sustainable economy and active citizenry by embedding sustainability as a core principle. Next slide please. So I'll speak specifically about one area that we have spent quite a bit of effort into. And that really has to do with the Singapore Green Building Plan. Could I have the next slide? So Singapore as a city-state is extremely challenged in terms of our ability to be able to tap renewable energy. And our buildings account for about twenty percent of our carbon emissions. So improving the energy efficiency of buildings is and has been a key approach for us under the Singapore Green Plan. We actually started the green building journey in twenty oh five. And that was with the establishment of the Green Mark Certification Scheme that evaluates the building's environmental impact and performance. And it looks not just at energy, but also at things like water and resource consumption. So developers have been incentivized to achieve high green building standards through the granting of bonus cross floor area, which represents the amount of space that can be developed under their respective projects. Co-funding has also been introduced to support the retrofit costs for existing buildings to become more energy efficient. So today, about half of all buildings in Singapore have been certified green. And the majority, that is almost two thirds of these, are actually certified at a higher end of the Green Mark Rating Scheme. Moving forward, we've set all new targets under the Singapore Green Building Master Plan set on this slide to achieve eighty, eighty, eighty by twenty thirty. And this refers to firstly, being able to green eighty percent of our buildings, both new and existing by twenty thirty. Secondly, achieving an eighty percent improvement in energy efficiency. This is compared to the baseline when we began in twenty oh five. And thirdly, having eighty percent of new developments to be super low energy, that is, buildings which are at least sixty percent more energy efficient than twenty oh five. So on the next slide, these are two recent examples of existing buildings which have been upgraded and certified as super low energy and net positive energy buildings under the Green Mark Scheme. And these are very important for us because they actually demonstrate to building owners and the industry that it is possible for existing buildings to up the energy performance as well. And I'll be happy to share more information about these buildings if there's interest. Our next slide. So besides the buildings, we, the other big challenge that we have to address is really the urban heat island effect. And this is particularly important for us as a tropical nation. We are enhancing urban greenery as a key plank to lower ambient temperature in our built up areas to build a city in nature. Now, as part of the plan, we will plant one million additional trees, integrate two hundred hectares of sky rise greenery into our buildings and provide for every household to be within a ten minute walk of a park by twenty thirty. We're also leveraging advancements such as the use of an integrated environmental modeling tool to design our neighborhoods and districts to enhance natural wind flow, which will facilitate cooler residential neighborhoods without having to resort to air conditioning. Next slide please. Finally, as a low lying island city state, we are also looking at adaptation strategies such as the use of nature based solutions within our urban areas. With climate change and resource constraints, there's been increased focus on approaches that can achieve positive impacts beyond just carbon abatement, working in alignment with living systems. So an example is the nature based solutions to infrastructure projects that can protect, manage or restore ecosystems that can simultaneously benefit human well being and enhance biodiversity. Bishan Amokyo Park is a well known example. It has actually been developed with floodable spaces that increase drainage capacity during storm events, but also function as additional recreational spaces during dry weather. Now, along our coastal areas, we have adopted a variety of coastal nature based solutions to minimize coastal erosion and conserve our biodiversity. So examples include the hybrid mangrove rock revertsment approaches along our northern coast, as well as intertidal seawall and offshore artificial reefs in our southern waters. Looking ahead, we are investing in research to better prepare our coastal areas for adaptation against projected sea level rise. And this will use innovative nature based solutions in projects like the Long Island, which would be developed along our east coast. And that addresses both the need to raise protection against sea level rise, but also to create space in a land starved city and to be able to cater for recreational needs of our residents. So with that, let me conclude and thank you. And I look forward to a lively discussion at the discussion later. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Hugh, can I just ask one question, which is just to put to you Richard Bellingham's point about if you like, the social and economic consequences of change and public acceptance and so on. As you've gone forward with this very impressive program, to what extent has that been a factor in your thinking, a a challenge or yes, to what extent has that been a factor for you?
Thank you very much for the question, Rodri. Actually, partnerships and bringing people along has been absolutely essential. With the green building journey, although I mentioned it started in twenty oh five, it's taken a while to move. And part of it is a recognition that the industry that it interacts with is a very siloed industry. So there are many specializations and it is easily one of those where you know, one part of the industry may not always agree or just may not have enough information to know how to digest it. So we had a fair bit of pushback when this was first introduced because many building owners and developers felt that basically we were just levying costs onto buildings to make them green. But we did recognize, and you know, I think the the point that Richard had raised about win, win, win was something that we should seek to achieve. Because the building owner, the occupants, and of course, the planet actually benefit if you have a greener building. And as I've shared with my colleagues in the industry as well, that upfront investment actually does translate into bigger value add for the people who are going to deliver a better product. And downstream, it actually saves you real money. And it provides for a better living environment for the occupants of these buildings. But this is not an easy set of co-benefits to put across unless you take the time to bring people along. So we worked with industry to set up the Singapore Green Building Council. And at that time, this is going back to about twenty oh eight, it is one of the first that really brings across all the different disciplines, including owners and developers into one council. Whereas traditionally, everyone has been organized according to whether you're a developer, an architect, an engineer, or an FM operator. And and there's very little cross conversation that takes place within these specializations.
Thank you. Thank you very, thank you very much, Hugh. Let me now turn to Ms. Marilia Carvalho de Melo from Minas Gerais in Brazil. I hope she's still, yeah, great, a very good connection. So Ms. Carvalho de Melo, could you just, to give our audience some context for the work that you're doing in your state and at city level, could you perhaps just explain why Minas Gerais has an important influence on Brazil's climate agenda?
But I was talking about our vulnerability index that we developed for our cities to help them to understand the vulnerability and to do specific actions for the climate change policy, both the neutralization, but especially for adaptation agenda. So this index was very important considering the diversity of our territory here in Minas Gerais. In natural characteristics, characteristics as well as social and economic. So we could by this index to understand the more important impacts in all regions of our state, especially water availability for economic sectors, desertification in north of our state, negative migration flux in some regions of our states, risk of natural disasters in almost of our cities in Minas Gerais. The three components of the vulnerability index are sensibility, degree to which a system is influenced, adaptability, ability of the system to adapt to climate change in order to mitigate potential damage, impact and exposure, nature, amplitude and heat of climate variation to which the considered system is exposed. So by these indicators that we development, we have the result that sixty eight percent of our cities, they are, they appears with high sensibility to climate change. So it's a big challenge. So it's a big challenge for us to help them to do a roadmap to make actions, practical actions to improve and increase their capacity of adaptation. So, eh, important thing that we start a program called Climate in Practice Roadmap for Municipal Climate Action Plans. And this was an important capacity building for our cities in our state. And we use some subjects to engage them with this program. To discuss the strategy to do with participation and cooperation to engage people and the citizens and the mayor for this. To discuss urbanist and build environment, management and energy production, agriculture and cattle farming, risk management, native vegetable coverage with a nature solution based actions and mobility as well. So this is the main subjects that we discuss and we construct a ability with our cities to propose a roadmap to change the capacity of adaptation and to move to a less vulnerability index in our state. So eh, this is a little bit about our experience. The local climate action plans based on using climate interaction in practice to select municipalities so that they are able to their own evolution. So they can monitor the all evolution by implementing.
I think it's going very well. But we've lost the phone signal now. Right. What a shame. I thought it was extremely interesting and obviously that this kind of value coming at this from a very different perspective, coming from the state level. And the question that I was going to ask was how you ensure there must be, there must be, I imagine, a variation in the resources and energy that local leaders have. You have eight hundred and fifty three cities, you have very diverse local leadership. We've heard this morning that urban leadership is really important. How do you go about ensuring a consistent level of energy and commitment across those cities? How do you grow the urban leadership that you need?
It's a very good question for us, especially with the diversity that we have here in our state and the number of cities. But I think the, the, our local leaders, they are very worried about the results and the risk that they are exposed. We live here in Minas Gerais, some problems about the extreme events, floods in cities with economic loss, we have.
I think this morning is proving to be an exercise in patience. We've got you back, you moved. Carry on, please.
Sorry for that, but I think the reality that we are dealing with the climate change, with the extreme weather that we have in our state. It's an important thing to engage our local leaders in an effective agenda. Because they are, our population is feeling lost. Not just economy, but risks for their lives. So in this case, we can have the population with us and with the population with us, we can engage our leadership, local leadership as well.
Thank you very much. That's a great answer to my question. We've, thank you so much for your patience. I know we've, it's been a bit tricky, but we've got you, you've made some really interesting points and, and contributed to the discussion. So thank you very much. We'll come back to you shortly. So please don't, please don't go away. Gavin, could I come back to you or could I come to you, please? So Gavin Slater had a sustainability for Glasgow City Council. During COP twenty six last year, we all learned a lot about Glasgow and about the, the many good things that you, and you and your team are doing there to tackle climate change. And I think today Gavin, you're going to talk about one of those projects. Where cutting edge technologies found a new purpose for the canal system in Glasgow. So over to you. Thank you.
Yes, thanks very much. Yeah, so exactly that. Just for a bit of context, in terms of climate change and the specific impacts upon Glasgow. For this city, it's very much about milder weather and increased rainfall. And those are really the sort of chronic impacts of all the change that Glaswegians have had to suffer. And will continue to suffer as things progress. So something that's very important for us is how we manage that surface water run out and how we manage incidences of flooding. And as you mentioned, the canal system is something that we've looked at as, as an innovative solution in the city. So the Glasgow Smart Canal combines eighteenth century infrastructure by way of the Fourth and Clyde Canal with twenty first century technology. By using weather forecasting, real time hydraulic simulation, automated sensors and controls and remote operator interfaces to dynamically manage the surface water and flood risk. And not only an economically efficient way, but a carbon efficient way. So it enables sustainable and resilient regeneration of an area of the north of the city. That not only manages that, but delivers circa three thousand new homes with a blue green placemaking approach. The Smart Canal is actually the first autonomously and dynamically managed surface water management system, diversifying the purpose of a canal in Europe. The project itself was built on a strong collaborative public sector partnership. Working between ourselves and Glasgow City Council alongside Scottish canals who own the infrastructure and Scottish Water. This has ensured best value use of public funding and enabled the sustainable regeneration of, over a hundred and ten hectares of the north of the city. These areas were previously constrained by both limited capacity in the combined sewer network and a lack of existing water courses to drain surface water. So that development that's taking place, those three thousand homes, those five development sites. They are as a direct result of this intervention. The traditional approach to resolving the drainage constraints would typically have involved some two kilometers of tunnels to discharge surface water directly into a river Clyde. An estimated to cost somewhere in the region of forty million pounds. But not only that, carrying a significant embodied carbon footprint. And this would not have been a favorable proposal, either economically or sustainably, or sustainably for the city. So we commenced this project with construction starting early in two thousand and nineteen and reached practical completion late in twenty twenty with the first development site connecting to the system and discharging flows late in twenty twenty one. The whole system is run by a control system that feeds live weather forecasting information into real time hydraulic simulations of surface water runoff. And from the five core development sites, the discharge via appropriate sustainable drainage systems into the canal. There is a central server that acts as the brain of this whole system, taking that forecast information and running the simulations to determine if and by how much the canal needs to be lowered in advance of a storm event. So when the system autonomously identifies extreme weather and predicts high runoff into the canals, the control system sends commands to remotely open and close valves, closing canal feeders and lowers the water level in the canal via three discharge points into the River Kelvin. These remotely operated control and telemetry stations were established at two main feeder locations and three discharge locations. They use remote monitoring and relay stations with a number of small feeder locations along with the flow and water quality stations to manage that flow level. We can actually now lower the water level in the canal by up to a hundred millimeters across nineteen kilometers of the Fourth and Clyde Canal. This creates capacity for fifty five thousand cubic meters of surface water in advance of the forecast rainfall and thus keeps the surface water out of the combined sewer network. This provides a drainage system to manage rainfall events up to the point five percent annual exceedance of probability, including future climate change predictions. So without this scheme, there would have either remained a significant constraint to development or a retention of increased flooding risk throughout the city. That includes the city center and the motorway which bisects it. So now, once the weather forecast improves and the storm passes over, the system allows the canals to discharge the excess water and return to their normal levels. So this for us is a very innovative way to manage what is the most significant risk to the city in terms of climate change using existing infrastructure in an economically and carbon friendly way. Thank you.
Gavin, thank you very much. Fascinating. So I think the combination of high tech and legacy infrastructure, centuries old infrastructure is, is really interesting and I'd be wonderful to know whether in some of the other cities, we've actually got the same issue where you can turn to advantage in a sense. Some ancient infrastructure. Very, very interesting. Thank you so much. I don't think we're quite ready to go back to Minas Gerais in, in Brazil yet. So I'm going to turn now to Ms. Moses Suedan in Dubai. If she could come on the camera. There she is. Hello again. So Ms. Suedan is Director of Strategy and Innovation in Digital Dubai. It's good to have you with us. And you're, you're going to change our focus and we're going to talk about Dubai's paperless strategy. Which I think has not only done a lot in terms of saving trees, but also generated a lot of multiplier benefits. So we'd love to hear more about how that, how this has been implemented.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having us today. It goes without saying that the sustainability and the climate change program have been always been part of the priority for the city of Dubai. Actually, one of the top priorities here in Dubai and there is a lot, a lot of programs and strategies and agendas. It has been developed through more than forty five government entities working in different domains, whether being transportation or education or health or construction and so on. There are a number of national goals, there are a number of, of local strategies such as U E Net Zero twenty fifty, we have the U E Green Agenda twenty thirty and there is also other local programs that focuses on sustainability and really utilizing all the different tools and the resources available to them to make a, a positive impact on this global issue. Now, when it comes to the, the, the foundation or the underlying, you know, element of, of all the strategies and agendas and we've heard a lot about it also through the other, our esteemed colleagues who have been talking about the same issue. Is using innovative technologies to contribute positively to actually finding solutions. You know, I, I cannot recall any of, of the talks that did not talk about systems or digital infrastructure or, you know, any component of, of technology. So it's, it's, it's really technology is integral part of, of the solution. With that mindset, basically our journey for digital transformation started twenty years ago. We started with e-government back then where His Highness Sheikh Mohammed Barashad Al-Maktoum Prime Minister and Vice President of U E and Royal of Dubai have mandated all the government entities to have their services available on his phone. And he literally took his phone and said, I want the services to be in here. That was twenty one years ago. And the government has put a lot of effort, not only to re-digitalizing their services, but also to build the, the infrastructure, the digital infrastructure, the data infrastructure to enable that kind of change. Although the change itself might seem to be, you know, technical, but the ultimate goal of it is to improve the quality of life of citizens. We want to have the citizens being able to interact with the government from their, the, the comfort of their homes. As opposed to driving, you know, their car to the service center, spending time, you know, dealing with manual kind of processing of these services or any other inefficient way of delivering these services. The journey continues throughout the last twenty years. You have rightly mentioned our latest strategy. Dubai Paperless Strategy was, was, which launched almost four, four years ago. And the ultimate goal of that strategy was, you know, yes, we've been transforming the services for the last twenty years. What else can we do to improve the quality of life of the citizens? And if we look at the main enablement component of that vision was our organization vision was, you know, making Dubai the happiest city on earth. That was around, you know, twenty fifteen onwards. If you think about it, we don't talk about, you know, technology. We did not say we want to be the state of the art city when it comes to technology implementation. We were focusing on the impact of the implementation of those digital solutions on the life of the citizen and the city and the community, as you also rightly mentioned. So Dubai Paperless Strategy aim was to digitize the government from the inside out. Not only the services that are served to the end customers, but even our internal operations. We wanted really to create cost effective solutions, efficiency and, and the work and the operations of the government that will reflect on the quality of, of services we offer to the citizen. It would reflect on building a very robust infrastructure that actually enables any kind of solutions that contributes to all the causes, including climate change. Just to give you the context of Dubai Paperless Strategy and the impact that was created throughout the last four years. You know, we have created the baseline for the government entities and discovered that we've been using around more than three hundred million sheets of paper annually used, were used by the forty five government entities that we worked with. And if you think about the millions of paper, it's not only, you know, paper, it's, there is a lot of dimensions to it. It's inefficiencies, it's, you know, customer having to go through a lot of, of obstacles to, to obtain that service, whether to submit paper or get a paper as an outcome of the service. There is also environmental, you know, aspect of it. We've been able to save around forty thousand trees, you know, by cutting those three hundred million paper annually. And that's, you know, you know, a huge impact on the way that we want to operate the city. Not only from technology and, you know, quality of life, but even on the you know, impact that we want to create on the, on the climate and on the environment and so on. And of course, you know, one of the key aspects to further, you know, the impact on the infrastructure and the contribution of, of technology to the climate actions were the consolidation of our government services. We realized, you know, many years ago that having multiple technology solutions available is also not efficient for the government. Yes, it's an advancement in the technology transformation, but it's not the most efficient way to use the resources. And at the end of the day, those technologies requires energy to operate and people as well to, to operate. So we have worked on consolidating our digital channels. Really providing seamless experiences through our unified, you know, services profiles or services platforms such as Dubai Now or Invest in Dubai, which are one stop shop for the citizens to obtain services from the government. The journey continues. One year ago, His Highness also announced the next phase of, of, of digital transformation Dubai and his vision was digitizing life in Dubai. Digitizing life is a scary vision for us because it's no longer about the government, it's no longer about the technology, it's lives, you know, of the citizen. It's a huge responsibility. And this kind of vision is, is not only services and infrastructure and all that, it's everything else around. It's the quality of life. It's the way you leave your house in the morning and reach to your destination feeling safe. Feeling you are in, operating in healthy environment, you are, you know, it's a pleasant experience overall. And with that vision, we, we basically have put seven key areas that we're working on currently. Digital city, we continue on using and leveraging technology advancements and, you know, making life or the city livable, as, as you have rightly mentioned previously. We focus on digital economy and of course, green economy is one of the key as well. Contribution there, we focus on digital skills, we focus on competitiveness and data and statistics and other areas and security as well, of course, as part of our portfolio. So it's never ending journey. You know, the strategy was one of many programs that we have launched over the years. And Dubai will continue, of course, their contribution and really working hand in hand with partners to make a positive impact on, on, on all the key agendas that are addressed globally.
Thank you very much. It's very interesting and you've reminded And you've reminded us once again that for all the talk about innovation, technology, systems and so on, actually, the lived experience of the citizen is at the end of the day what this is actually all about. Can I just ask you a very quick question? I was very interested by Hugh's nature based solutions and the sort of offshore island that they're building. Is there anything in the Dubai Sustainable Sustainability Agenda which involves nature based solutions?
Well, there are a number of programmes, actually, to be honest. And there is a number of strategies and programmes and initiatives that have been launched by different sectors, you know, and all of them contributes to having, using the resources in a different and innovative way. So definitely, that's an area that we are looking at through all the different agendas that has been launched, you know, since many years and will continue to launch in the future as well.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you very much indeed. I'm going to continue to leave our panellists from Brazil to the last, just to give her the maximum chance to get back online. So I'm going to turn to Jonas now, Jonas Roberts, who is Vice President at WSP Environment and Infrastructure. Now Jonas comes at this topic with a rather different perspective. That's to say of a private sector company which has worked with the city authority to support its resilient strategy. And in Jonas's case, the city was born in Ontario, Canada, and the project won the 2021 Smart Fifty Award. So Jonas, please tell us about the project. What way was it innovative and why did you win an award for it?
Well, thank you, Rodri, and good day, everyone. So it's innovative, actually, in a lot of the ways that we're already discussed already on the panel today. And so, you know, I can go through the specifics of this project and it's quite granular. And, you know, it is a very specific case study. But, you know, it's kind of the why it's successful, which is, I think, the main message here. And we do work with a lot of cities and, you know, what we'll be talking about today is, you know, far from unique in how we find innovation to be successful when it's pushed forward. So, you know, when we talk about climate resilience, the conversation, you know, can sometimes focus on looking ahead years or decades and designing and building more resilient infrastructure and balancing the needs of present with security and durability of future. And that's often how the conversation starts. But, you know, as everyone here knows, cities and towns are dealing with climate change now. Impacts already affect daily municipal operations. And we must take advantage of operational and real time resilience in addition to strategic and long term resilience. So my comments today, we'll tie in with some of the keynote remarks from earlier relating to smart, sensible cities and responsive cities. So as you mentioned, I live in Canada and is, you know, probably fairly well known. Our winters can be rather severe. Every winter storm is unique and requires a different approach to keeping our urban roads safe. The timing, direction, duration, magnitude and even type of winter precipitation is becoming less consistent. It's evolving and our response needs to evolve in kind. So in addition to having large fleets of snow removal equipment, huge stockpiles of salt or other chemicals and hundreds of trained personnel at the ready, city managers also require timely and accurate information on which to base decisions. And how we provide that actionable insight is the innovation I'd like to focus on today. And in many ways, you know, this innovation is much in common with Glasgow's dynamic analysis and that Mr. Slater just discussed. But, you know, more important than the actual innovation is why its implementation has been successful. And I'll circle back to this in a couple of minutes, but it should come as no surprise, you know, given the theme of this, that it comes down to successful partnerships and not just leading at technologies and strategies. So many cities in Canada have a regulatory requirement to avail of road weather forecasts. And these forecasts, hourly weather and pavement conditions multiple days in advance. These forecasts are then used to guide snow clearing and salting operations. Now, our team at WSP in close partnership with the city of Vaughan in Ontario has taken things beyond these basic regulatory requirements with an innovation known as MDSS or Maintenance Decision Support System. Now, MDSS provides insight into four key questions for decision makers. Number one is what kind of responses required? Plowing, salting, some combination or nothing at all? Number two is how much, how much salt or other application needs to be applied? Number three is when? When's the ideal time to deploy and mobilise? And four is where? Where should you focus your resources? All are big questions and the answers are different for every single event. Now, MDSS uses a combination of in situ monitoring, including a roadside network and sensors embedded in the pavement itself, numerical weather prediction models, including global and high resolution regional models, input from our team of professional meteorologists, as well as advanced data analytics and AI to determine what the resulting road conditions will be and provide guidance designed to ensure the most effective and efficient storm response, all while keeping, you know, citizen and public safety front of mind. The specific guidance is tailored to a city's predefined response criteria. And we work closely with the city of Vaughan's project manager during the setup phase to ensure that, you know, expectations, you know, the outputs aligned or, you know, their expectations aligned with the outputs of our systems. And we continue to work closely with them today to ensure that, you know, the system remains effective and relevant and continuously improving. You know, nothing is static. So, you know, if it works today, it's not necessarily going to work next year. And so you have to, it's a very iterative process that keeps being revisited. Now, the results of the city of Vaughan making MDSS operational and, you know, a reduction in driving hours. So less fuel is used and fewer greenhouse gases are emitted. Reduction in the amount of salt and other chemicals needed, which reduces pollution, minimises the amount of salt in the local environment. And on average, over a hundred tonnes of salt, a hundred tonnes less salt is used per winter event. And they have about sixty winter events per year, just to give you an idea. Also, the reduction in costs is on the order of about half a million dollars a year. So all of this while ensuring, you know, the ultimate goal, that the winter roads have a high level of safety in increasingly variable weather. Now, as you mentioned, because of their success in this implementation, the city was a 2021 Smart Fifty Award recipient from Smart Cities Connect and US Ignite. But, you know, looking across the panellists and the cities that they represent today, not everyone has to deal with winter storms. So, you know, some of you may be wondering how this innovation is applicable to your own situation. And to address that, I want to go back to what I mentioned earlier and that's why it was successful. First, foremost, above everything else is partnership and trust, including close collaboration and alignment in goals. Could be the, you know, most high tech innovation in the world and it wouldn't work if all the stakeholders and parties weren't aligned. You know, this was something new for the city of Vaughan and relatively new for our team at WSP as well. And whenever you break free from the status quo and usual way of doing things, you're bound to encounter some challenges and hurdles and naysayers, you know, as Mr. Hugh Lim highlighted earlier with Singapore's initiatives. But persistence is key, requires patience and an iterative approach and regular open communication between those involved and engagement with all the stakeholders. Now, another key factor in its success is taking the best improvement technology and building on it. We applied state of the art monitoring devices, modelling and analytics, and we integrated them into our forecasting system, but customised them for the city of Vaughan's needs. We worked to ensure MDSS had the best information feeding into it and was doing the right things with that data before generating the operational guidance. Anybody involved in modelling knows the old adage, garbage in, garbage out. So we have to make sure that what's going in is of high quality. And the final reason for its success was that it went above and beyond the narrow minimum regulatory requirements and sought out solutions with multi-faceted benefits, you know, emissions and pollution reduction, cost savings and improved operational resilience in the face of evolving weather patterns. So, you know, I believe that, you know, regardless of where you live and what your city's challenges are, many of these factors will hopefully lead to success and innovation.
Great. So thank you very much, Jonas. Very, very interesting indeed. And noticing the overlap with Glasgow, overlap with Singapore as well. Again, exactly, this bridge is doing what it's supposed to do, which is to generate some common interests, some shared ground. Thank you very much. We've been talking with our panellists about the, some very vivid examples, interesting examples of innovative thinking, design and implementation. And now what we're going to focus on, although we've touched on it already, is the partnerships which are so critical to the achievement of the SDGs and to the urban sustainability agenda. So we're really in the territory of SDG seventeen now, which highlights the importance of, and let me quote here, "different sectors and actors working together in an integrated manner by pooling financial resources, knowledge and expertise." So because city policymakers and leaders are right at the heart of these essential coalitions, we've got some big questions for our panellists. So I've got two questions and I'm going to come around to you all, please. So the first question is, how has partnership with different stakeholders enabled your city to take successful climate action? And secondly, what are the key lessons that you learned about partnership that you would share with other cities? So Hugh, I know you've got to leave us at some point, so let me come to you first. In what specific ways have partnerships mattered you in your green building journey in Singapore?
Oh, thank you very much. So I mentioned earlier the efforts to bring different industry players together and we find that that's absolutely essential in order to get that cross conversation by different owners as well as service providers. I would add that, you know, we're discovering new things each day. One example I would share is that in one of the towns, we have a pilot programme that is trying to put together, you know, a distributed district cooling network. And this is a brownfield site, so the buildings are all up already. And, you know, what has come about is that by looking at the cooling plants that are owned by individual buildings, someone has been able to discern that actually, if you shared some of that cooling capacity, everyone could actually make do with less. So there's both a cost saving, maintenance, reduction and ultimately, an energy reduction just by pooling together some of these different buildings. But if everyone just stuck to their existing plans, you can continue to pay for it on your own. So that kind of conversation we found is absolutely essential. And having people in the private sector motivate some of these sharing arrangements has actually helped us to move forward. On the public sector, we have a programme that's been running for some years. This is called the Solar Nova Programme. And this really has to do with outsourcing solar panels across different public agencies. So again, if everyone had gone it on their own, you probably would not get the same efficiencies in the panels as well as the pricing that we're able to get as a whole of government. So again, having someone take the lead, in this case, the Housing Development Board and the Economic Development Board, and then to offer to do it for everyone else has enabled us to move into the seventh tender exercise under this particular initiative. And again, that has helped us to move immensely compared to if every agency were just to, or even every building owner were trying to do it on their own. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Hugh. Very interesting. So Ms. Carvalho, I'm going to come back to you now, to your experience of partnership. And I wonder if you could say something about the kind of international cooperation? To what extent has international cooperation been useful or is useful to you in developing tools for climate change across the state? No, not. Try again. I'll come back to you if you need another few minutes. Now, let me move on to the next person and we'll come back. So Gavin, let me come to you next. I mean, you've got a large ecosystem of stakeholders in Glasgow and quite a sophisticated ecosystem of stakeholders. When you and your colleagues try to answer the question of what a sustainable Glasgow will look like in future, who do you want to have around the table? Who do you need to have around the table?
That's a, that's a good question and it's, I think it's an evolving answer. In 2010, we established our Sustainable Glasgow Partnership. In fact, Richard Bellium was very much part of that work. And that brought together a variety of actors across the public and private sector. So we had, obviously, the city council and a number of academic partners, including the University of Strathclyde. We also had a number of private sector companies who were involved in that piece of work. And the aim at that point was to reduce Glasgow's emissions by thirty percent by 2020. I should, I should say, we did that. We did that and more. By 2020, we actually reduced our emissions by fifty percent, which we're very proud of. But that initial relationship, that group of stakeholders round the table, didn't quite pan out as well as we might have hoped. You know, the participation of the private sector in the project design stage often made it difficult for them to then be involved in the project delivery stage through procurement rules. So we redefined the partnership a couple of times and we relaunched it again in 2020. And it's now much more public sector driven. So it's the council, the health sector, the education sector, the academic sector. There is some private sector representation by way of our energy network operator, given that they are the sole operator in the city, just about. But it is very much driven by the public sector. What we did was establish hubs underneath the board to allow the private sector to come in and be part of that conversation at a very specific level. So we established hubs based on the green economy in private sector, green infrastructure and transport, heating and housing and greening the city. And that's brought about a number of different solutions and innovations and approaches, some of which are not very technical at all, they're very much about stakeholder engagement. One of the things, for example, if you go on the Sustainable Glasgow website, you'll find our Sustainable Glasgow Business Charter. And that is a sign up commitment for businesses of all shapes and sizes in Glasgow to be part of our Net Zero Carbon Commitment for 2030. And it's not sign up and then walk away. It's something that we monitor and manage and work with the stakeholders on. So we're seeing now a much bigger selection of businesses in the city keen to be part of that journey, but also an increasing citizen voice and community voice in that discussion as well. So we're now delivering community energy projects with local co-ops, where we're allowing them to put solar on our roofs and sell the energy back to us and then use that profit for local gains. But that demand for citizen participation is growing all the time. And, you know, we're running various different platforms to try and ensure that we engage with them in a way that's appropriate and inclusive and takes account of their lived experience and their contributions. And we do that through things like climate cafes and specific stakeholder events. And I think that that level of desire on their part to be included is really good. It means that we are delivering solutions that are now not just top down, but they're bottom up as well. So we're finding that point, you know, as others have spoke about, where we're delivering what people want to see. But at the same time, we're reaching people that were previously, not deliberately, perhaps excluded from the conversation. So we're having a much more rounded approach. So, you know, there's a number of different ways that we act with stakeholders across the city, but I think it's a constant, and that's part of the challenge, it's a constant evolution. And you constantly need to refresh that conversation all the time.
Absolutely. Just Hugh, do you want to comment? Does that resonate with you? It seems to me that there is a bit of an overlap with your experiences you were discussing, but this constant reinvention almost or refreshing of the relationship with the citizen, is that something?
Absolutely. And I think increasingly, especially in addressing many of the transitions that we need, you know, I think we've moved from the stage of addressing things that the public and the private sector can take towards issues that will affect the daily habits of our citizens. And that's where it's even more important to draw them in. I mentioned earlier the Long Island Project. And, you know, instead of just going about designing it and implementing it, actually, the agency's concern, in this case, the Public Utilities Board, they are very much involved in an engagement exercise today really to hear from residents along the coast, you know, whose whole experience will be impacted by whatever the solution is put in place, to hear from them, you know, what their concerns might be, but also what their ideas may be to be able to, you know, address both the threat of rising sea levels, but also how to impact the immediate community. And I think that's increasingly what we expect to see. You know, all of the solutions and the You know, all of the solutions and the approaches going forward, I think more and more, they will impact the daily lives of our citizens and our residents. So it's not something I think that we can quietly cook up in the back room, deliver, and, you know, suddenly everyone wakes up and, you know, it's a different landscape that's provided. Also, I think many of these take time and effort over an extended period. And, you know, that will, that will require, you know, public support, funding. So I think many cities are going to see that, seeing through their commitments, will take extended social-political support over, you know, decades. And that's something that means you have to bring people along and see, let them see that it is part of charting a collective future. And it is, it is not just, you know, a technical solution for the moment.
Absolutely. Thank you. You mentioned a really important point, and in a way, it's a bit of an elephant in the room. But actually, political stability matters at the urban level. If you've got governments that are constantly changing and have different agendas, it's extremely difficult to come up with this sort of holistic strategy that's based on citizen values and has the buy-in. But maybe that's an issue for another time. Maybe that's, that's, that's an issue for next year's conference. So let's go back to Minas Gerais and let's hope that we can get from Marilia Carvalho de Mello. Would you like to take your turn now and let's hope that the technology works for a few minutes?
Me too. Thank you very much. We are talking about international cooperation, isn't it?
Yes.
On the basis of shared responsibility, the Paris Agreement established so-called international solidarity cooperation. And for us, it's very important, especially in Brazil, because we are a country in development. So it's very important to have this opportunity to international cooperation. Here in Minas Gerais specifically. Before, after we signed the Commitment to Race to Zero Campaign, it was very important, this international cooperation. We could to do our greenhouse gas inventory and to do a new climate pact for our state. A new plan that provides us actions to achieve the naturalization in 2050. And it was very important because we have the support of the England Government to do this both instruments so important for us here in the state. But above of this, I think it's very important to, to transfer technologies for countries as Brazil. It's very important to, to improve our technologies of natural resources uses to mitigate the effects and good practices in other countries as well. So it's very important, this international collaboration for us.
Thank you very much. Well, of course, that's very much what Bridge for Cities is all about, creating those connections and those opportunities for collaboration. So let's go to Dubai now and Moses Swedan. So you've had, I just wonder what challenges you've, you had in implementing your very ambitious strategy city-wide? What is your stakeholder management experience been? What lessons can others learn?
Sure. So I think, you know, one of the, I think there is something that everyone agrees on is creating that collaborative environment for all the stakeholders to work towards one goal is key for creating the impact that is, we intend to create. For us in the city of Dubai and through all the different strategies that we launch, we realize and we understand there is no one owner, no one strategy, or one tool, or one law that will create the impact that we want to create for the citizens of Dubai. It's always partnership and it's a shared responsibility. It's not only the government, it's not only the private sector, it's not only the policymakers, it's not only the citizens. It's everyone has to be contributing to the cause and to the vision of any strategy that we put, including the one that I spoke about here. To give an example, probably, that will illustrate, you know, the importance of, you know, stakeholder management and is one of the strategies that was launched by the Rodden Transport Authority, which is basically Dubai Autonomous Transportation Strategy 2030, which aims at transforming 20% of our transport to autonomous cars. And, you know, although the foundation of it is technology-driven, however, the impact of that strategy is aiming at reducing, of course, the transportation impact on the environment, carbon emissions, accidents, raising productivity of individuals, savings hundreds of millions of hours of, you know, wasted hours and then communing around the city. And of course, savings of more than 400 million a year by reducing environmental pollution by 12%. There is no way that this can happen without partnership, you know, this kind of impact. And if it happens without partnership, it is not going to be the same impact that we, you know, envisioned to have. And now the authority has been working, you know, since the launch of the strategy with so many stakeholders. They're working with the private sector to ensure that there is, you know, a deep collaboration with, with, with all the different stakeholders from private sector to make this strategy vision happen. They're working with the infrastructure sector within the government to ensure there is, you know, infrastructure allows for such transformation in transportation. They're working with legislators, policymakers to also make sure that there is legislative frameworks to enable that kind of change. And this is just one example out of tens of strategies and programs that we launch, you know, every year, you know, targeting different domains and different areas of the city development overall. So stakeholder management is actually in the DNA of every program that we launch and it will continue to be because it's time for us to make, you know, huge impact fast as opposed to silo efforts with minimum impact that will actually, you know, not will, it will not keep the pace, in pace with the issue evolving over time. And we know, we all know that the climate, you know, issue is a global, fast-going kind of issue that needs to be addressed and the implementation has to cope with that kind of fast-paced as well.
Well, thank you very much. I think all your fellow city representatives would agree with that. I think you've just summed up what is a consensus view, that collaboration is essential. So Jonas, you're here for the unique perspective that you bring as a private consultant working with cities. What advice would you give city policymakers, decision-makers about how to get the best from their relationship with the private sector, how to optimize that relationship?
Take it beyond just an exercise in checking boxes. Don't simply do something because you were mandated to do it. Actually, you know, see what value can be from, can be gained from initiatives. And, you know, that, that involves, you know, all of the things that were discussed here today, like, you know, reaching out to, you know, the citizens, the stakeholders, other cities. You know, there's, there's levels of partnership and collaboration across the spectrum. Like, you know, everybody from, you know, like, you know, you and your colleague on the front line out, you know, in the field, right up to, you know, international funding agencies. And, you know, often there's, you know, people have so much on their plates these days that they're just trying to get those boxes checked because that's what they feel, you know, is required to get them through the day, to, you know, to get to the next day. But oftentimes, like, that, that means that you're missing out on incredible opportunities to, you know, to create these multifaceted benefits, to create these partnerships. Like, I couldn't have said it better myself, like, you know, the, the way siloed efforts have a very minimal impact. And, you know, in, you know, in private industry, we, there's almost this tendency to want to keep things in-house because, you know, if we do it all ourselves and we keep all the revenue. But, I mean, it's so much slower and so much less effective. And, you know, is often less successful in the end. And, you know, it doesn't benefit the, your clients, the other, other people you're working with. And there's so many great, great organizations and great people out there doing just so many tremendous things that, you know, you can't be an expert in all things all the time. So, you know, keep, have conversations with, you know, with the intent of not just waiting for your turn to speak, but for, for, for listening and seeing, okay, this is great, what can, you know, what can we do with this? Like, how can we build on, on each other and make something, you know, the whole greater than the sum of the parts? You know, this is, this type of forum is, is, is a fantastic opportunity to, to, to do that and promote, you know, one level of collaboration and partnership.
Well, well, as I say, hopefully, this morning's conversations have been in themselves an act of cross-fertilization. And hopefully, your, our experts have been interested by what they've been saying in this session. So can I just say thank you very much to you all, to Hugh Lim, to Moses Swedan, to Marilia Carvalho de Mello? Particular thanks to you for putting up the difficulties we had, to Gavin Slater from Glasgow and Jonas Roberts. Thank you all very much indeed for being with us and for sharing your expertise. I'm now going to ask back Professor Wu and Professor Bellingham, our professor duo, to see what they made of the conversation that we've had so far. Because as I explained to everybody earlier, one of the points of today, or the purpose of today, was really to try and start shaping the agenda for Bridge for Cities 2023, trying to highlight some important issues and some key takeaways. I should actually have asked our panelists before I let them go, what they thought might be the takeaways. And maybe I'll even bring them back. But Richard, I got you back. So you've been hearing the way that the cities have been, our panelists have been contributing their experience and talking through some very interesting, very diverse but interesting case studies. So what for you, what for you is emerging as perhaps some, you know, some key takeaways, some key ideas, things that we should be packing up and taking with us into 2023?
I think what was very striking was how cities are embedding combined sustainability and resilience solutions for their cities that are, and these are solutions that are tailored for their, their specific city needs. They, they reflect the, you know, the issues they face, they build on their infrastructure that they have and, and their capabilities. And they also recognize the, the needs of their communities. So we're seeing, we are seeing the kind of, you know, holistic approach that, you know, the, the non-siloed approach that we were, that colleagues were talking about, where, where we're, what we're seeing is technical solutions working hand in hand with policy and policy, and policy objectives to maximize the positive impacts. And the recognition that this needs to be done with, you know, multiple partners. You know, the city authorities cannot and indeed should not do it on their own. They need to engage their citizens, their communities, and indeed, commercial partners to deliver effectively. One of, one of the areas we're working on is, but what we need is, is actually, is for many other cities. We've got some great examples in the, in the room today. But what we need are many other cities across the world to adopt similar approaches because we need to scale up this, this impact, so it's global. So, I mean, we, we do work with some of the partners here today. We're, we're very open to working with others. One of the areas we're working on is a, is a framework that tries to balance up, you know, technical analysis with financial analysis and socioeconomic outcomes to work out what are the optimal solutions for cities. Because this is, this is a multi-stranded approach that's needed. Just because something works technically doesn't mean it's the right solution. It could be that it needs to be adapted so it fits better to an individual city's needs. So we'd be delighted to work with partners here today and, and others more widely to develop and apply that framework to help cities, you know, deliver the solutions they need.
Let me just ask you about the difficulties though, because we've been quite positive this morning. I think we've been very optimistic in some ways. We've had some great, we've had some great ideas and great solutions discussed. And we're clearly, we've heard from some city leaderships who have got it and they're actually making progress. But looking across that global picture, when you, when you say, you know, we need many more cities involved, what is, what are the biggest problems, you know, what are the biggest obstacles to getting that kind of mobilization?
Well, financing is, is one, you know, for, for, you know, particularly in the, the developing world, access to financing or financing mechanisms at the scale necessary to make, make the scale of change, you know, that we're talking about, is, is, that's fundamental and that, that's something that needs to be addressed. There are innovative financing mechanisms which are emerging or, or business models which, which allow, for example, commercial funding to be used to deliver public policy objectives. But I would say financing is, is a huge issue. The pace of change for some cities is also a huge issue. Some, some developing world cities are growing very fast. And, and for them to understand how their city is going to change, how its needs are going to change, and to design solutions that aren't based on a snapshot of today, but are based on where their city is going to be in five years' time, 10 years' time, that, that's a really difficult issue. So, so developing scenarios that helps decision-makers understand how the city's.
Thank you. I like the very, I'm just going, before I go to Professor Wu who's come out, I do want to, can I ask Mrs. Swedan and then Mr. Carvalho de Mello about that point, about how you, how you manage today and a future horizon in your respective areas of responsibility? How are you managing to, as Richard said, you know, prepare for five years down the track or three years down the track? What methods do you use to anticipate the future as well as to deal with the big challenges? Let's go to Moses Swedan first.
Sure. So, you know, this, this challenge in particular, to be honest, is one of the key challenges that we keep on facing whenever we come up with a new strategy. There is always something new in the world of technology. It evolves, you know, very, very fast. And we also need to evolve our thinking and our approach to actually, you know, change quickly with the change of technology. Now, at the government level, we are basically changing our operating model in a way that we can respond to change faster. We are implementing, you know, a number of agile methodologies and agile frameworks and structuring ourselves around, in a way that we can reconfigure, you know, our organizations at a government level to respond to any changes that we need to address. There is always, you know, programs that extend over time. However, the government even have changed their strategic cycles from, you know, previously, it used to be we have three, four, 10 years' plan. Now our strategic reviews becomes every six months. And this is basically us realizing that, you know, the world is changing so fast and the priority changes so fast. We need to keep realigning ourselves every, you know, twice a year to make sure that we are always ready for any change that happens. It's definitely, you know, a continuous challenge that we face and we are not only, we're trying not to be only responsive to the change, but being prepared to anticipate and predict and reconfigure ourselves in an agile manner to continue to, to deliver our vision, but also align ourselves to any changes that might come on the way.
Brilliant. Interesting. Thank you very much. Agility, another word that has, we just, we stumbled on the word agility late in our discussion, but it's actually hugely important. So, Ms. Carvalho de Mello, last comment from you on this issue of how you juggle prioritization today and tomorrow?
So that's an important question. As I just mentioned, we have finished now our state plan of climate change action. And with the, the tool that I just presented to the Index of Vulnerability with the cities, we are defining actions in short, medium and long term in all of states. So we, of course, start from the GHG inventory. And after that, with the analysis of risks and vulnerability in each region of our state, we define our state climate action plan and help the cities to develop their own plans. And of course, that we have two place. And of course, that we have two places to go that's more important for us. The first is to achieve our commitment to reduce the emissions of eh, carbon gases in our state. And the other one, and to help our cities to adapt of this change because they are still feeling the problems that we have, the impacts that we have, especially in the economy, but as well as the vulnerability of all the citizens. So the first plan that we are implementing in our state is to change or to improve our eh, energy metrics. We are today the biggest eh, the the first state in eh, solar generation in Brazil. So we are doing this with the municipalities. And another goal that we are working with them is to increase our forest coverage in all the states of Minas Gerais to have this important balance of emissions and capture of greenhouse gases. So I think that's it.
So Miss Carvalho, thank you so much, Miss Carvalho de Mello. That's that's really helpful. Thank you. And Miss Moses Suedan from Dubai, thank you. Thank you also for your your contribution comment. We have Professor Wu from Tongji University back with us. And Professor Wu, I don't know how much of the discussion you've been able to hear, the panel and so on, but the question that I put to Richard was, what are some of the key takeaways for you and what what issues have we been discussing this morning, which should definitely be central to the agenda for next year's Bridge for Cities meeting?
Or like say that today, we just the first time under this name, a bridge for cities. That very important is that we have to see the climate changer. The influence of that is not same to the city. To the city is different, influence is different. And so we should very clear know the influence of climate change to the north city, to the south city. The cities in source in the north is very different. But that we have the to know each other. First of all, we should be, let the people know the challenger is everybody. It's not say you are challenger, my my challenger is to the world, to the every city. That's the first very important. So we have to, from today, to exchanging the challenger is the in the world. It's not for me, also for you, for the whole people, the different city have different challenger. We cannot survive alone. This is the first of all, I think very important. Second, we should really find the same good example, somehow we cannot say the best examples, but we say some people already do something in the cities. Let the people learn each other. That's the meaning of the bridge. Not know the challenger, also know the good case. We not say best practice, know the good case in the world. Some people do this. It's so good. We should know it. That is also very important from the world. That is the second part. I think from today to next year, we should one know the challenger, second, know the good case in the world.
Thank you very much indeed, Professor Wu. That's extremely helpful. I think Director General Muller in his opening remarks said that it was very important in meeting climate challenges to think out of the box and learn from each other. And I mean, that's exactly what Bridge for Cities is about, to your point. And that's exactly why I think what I think we've done this morning, I think. This morning has says, if you like, vindicated, you need those decisions back in twenty sixteen to launch Bridge for Cities as a knowledge platform to allow this kind of sharing. So we've reached the end of our session. We have a a minute or so left for me to close things off with some thanks. I think we have, I hope that everybody agrees that we've achieved our objective, which was to highlight the way in which innovation and partnership are centrally important to the ability of the world to meet its climate challenges and to achieve a more climate resilient future. With all eyes on Sharm El Sheikh and COP twenty seven, there is some pessimism at the moment about the climate collaboration at the governmental and 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 multilateral level. But I think actually what today's conversation has shown is that there is some cause for optimism. Because clearly at the urban level, we do have leaders who are engaged and we have a lot of hugely positive and creative work underway to tackle climate and energy challenges. So on behalf of the organizers, can I please express very warm gratitude to all our speakers, to our our panelists, to Jonas, to Moses Suedan, to Marilia Carvalho de Mello, to Hugh Lim from Singapore. I'm sorry, we didn't have Vito Mulala from Lu Longue with us, but hopefully he can come in person next year. Thank you very much to Richard Bellingham and Professor Siegfried Wu from Tongji for your insightful and expert comments. And I'd also like to thank Director General Gerd Muller, Ambassador Wang Chun, Mr. Muna Sharif Mohammed, and of course, Mr. Omar Al Raffi from Arawi, I beg your pardon, from Vienna for their remarks earlier in the session. Thank you very much to our online audience. I hope you found this an insightful and interesting way of spending a morning. Do remember, please, that we will have an in-person Bridge for Cities event in twenty twenty three. We hope very much to see you all there. But for now, it's goodbye.